With your Kings to the Home's High Line and your Irving Brook Line going through.
Sorry.
These are the number of kids will be moving from boundary six eight in 2017. About 700 plus students will be moving.
Go back.
Let's go back.
Probably a, none are moving probably a.
Nope.
So that is answered my question.
Yep.
My daughter.
Yep, okay. Any questions about that? All right. So this is somewhat complicated, but what we tried to show you is kind of the current map with an overlay on the white shaded lines with a number of kids moving around each pocket. It would make more sense once we show you a 2017 map. But as you can see in the upper corner, yep. So we have a few kids that will be transitioning from one district to another, I mean one boundary to another.
And then that's the total 730.
Yep, and once we overlay the map. So as you can see, I think we're pretty close at balancing out the middle school model six eight. Okay, with Skyview still being, knowing that we'll have continued growth in Skyview, still being the school at the 900 plus.
Oh, and Timmercrest.
We know Timmercrest doesn't have any growth.
Yeah.
Right, so as the graduating classes move out, yeah, this will continue to decline.
Yeah. Historically, Timmercrest also has more kids going off to private school and stuff at the middle school level.
Yeah, true, yeah.
So typically, you plan for larger numbers out there, then they don't show up.
And they put the 800s and stuff.
Sorry.
So for us, and that's a good point that can make, we find everything at the high watermark level. Knowing that there's waivers and everything else that goes on in there. Any questions on the middle school? Do any members, anything that I missed there?
Observation that we were trying to keep groups, one of the overarching things as we move up through the grade levels, was trying to keep the kids on went to grade school together with those same kids as they go into junior, sorry, middle school and move up into high school. That was huge as we pushed them through to make sure that they stayed with the same kids as much as we could. We couldn't always.
So not only is the challenge, as Mitch said, to look at the horizontal balance at each level, but we have to make the regional balance move up and hopefully still honor our consideration themes as we roll them up in grades.
Yeah, if you look at this, Peter, better, there's actually less splits in this plan than there is currently.
Oh, that's a good, interesting.
Write that down, Lea.
But there's a lot of change.
Oh, yeah.
There's about 700 plus, right? 700 plus changes.
But that's huge to be able to tell the community that your elementary school is a decent deal to the.
Yeah.
All right, so now the infamous high school. All right, this is the one we've all been waiting for. So as you can see, three regions big, Woodinville being the biggest, you know, where it's, I think, 10 elementary speeding to Woodinville High School. And now we're creating a fourth high school. And we'll have to sort of split this up into now fourths, all right? So there's, there's going to be a transition with the high school, knowing that 2000, in 2017, the North Creek High School will only be a 911. I think that was a decision that we made. So really, everything will be equalized in 2018, right? Where all four grades will be there in 2018. So we try to indicate that where the start will only be 911 being only. So Woodinville to North Creek and Boffo High School to North Creek will only be 911 students.
And so what that means is, remember that, those, those three high schools, existing high schools in that 2017-18 year are going to bump up.
Just the seniors are still.
Because all, 100% of district seniors are still going to be in those three schools. And then they'll, they'll moderate then the next year as all of those seniors graduate in North Creek.
So at the history level, we're looking at due to boundary changes roughly 1600 plus students that will be impacted due to boundary changes.
Both of those being North Creek.
North Creek, yeah, about 1100.
Kind of critical to see if you want to.
Yeah, that's a, that's a significant change. I've already met with the PTAs at Kenmore Elementary and they're already really nervous about it.
Yeah, and what, what I was surprised people didn't really think about ahead of time is that with it being 9 through 12 versus 10 through 12, all of your existing high school service areas have to get smaller because you're bringing four grades out there instead of three. So even though their Inglemore isn't really near North Creek, there's still going to have to change because you're running.
So again, your shaded areas are your 2014 area. And we drew, we tried to draw some white lines to show you who was moving from where. So if you just look at that Inglemore example, we're talking about Inglemore to Boffo, we estimate roughly about 350 9 through 11 graders and then about 110 12 graders.
Those Inglemore kids are going to be happy they don't have to go across the slope.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's true. I am hearing from, not all of them, but a number of them in that area saying it should be nice enough. Drop has Boffo on or we.
That's largely Lockwood and a part of Kenmore for the most part. Yeah, and so the other thing, well, the next slide will show it, it'll get better. But look at those numbers, that, that will look better. And then what we've looked at, a really nice part of this plan is if 100% of the 12th graders who are impacted by the Inglemore to Woodinville or Inglemore to Boffo move, decided that they wanted a waiver to stay in as 12th graders. If this looks like Inglemore would have, now they need to be able to accommodate that.
Now, what if?
Let's go back to the original.
And then so then there's some, oh, only eighth class.
There's only eight plus later to Boffo.
Again, keep in mind on that, Inglemore looks like its numbers are a lot lower, but we left room there for the.
I don't know, coming in. Which is like.
Yeah, okay, let's go back. So again, 2017, this is really a transition year. Considering this is a transition year, knowing that there's, the North Creek does not, is only 3, 3 grades. Okay, so we'll show, we'll show you what 2018 will look like once we normalize. A little bit more reasonable, I think, as you look at the four schools. And again, we had to calculate this at sort of high watermark. So that's sort of the, the concept that we took as we looked at the four regions. But I think one of the things that we'll have to consider is knowing that the north end will continue to grow. We know North Creek will probably get a little bit bigger based on the housing, you know, and the net. And when that bubble happens, it's going to be dominoesome.
And just like the elementary, Boffo actually has more capacity than Woodinville or Orange.
So we decided it's going to be the North Creek High School two ups.
Two ups.
Don't they come into you?
Fight pick, yeah.
No. I'm in all the eyes, it's going to be the mud camps, but the color's going to be brown.
Not aware on that map is the Kenmore City Limits boundary.
Good question, we don't know. And we can certainly get that information for you. We'll overlay the, we'll overlay the city, the city boundaries on there. Yeah, you betcha.
Yeah, we quickly found out the more boundaries you have, the less sense all of it makes.
And honestly, I'm so glad that I was able to come and attend that long session that you had because it gave me such a good sense of what your process was and the questions you were asking. And I'm so incredibly confident about the process that you used and the work that you did and appreciative.
So any other questions on the high school boundary proposal before we move into our estimated impact?
Just really quickly, so what are the capacities of Boffo Elementary, just for 2017, since those numbers, I mean, they are what they are, but I'm just wondering how that, it's a little different.
Yeah, we think that our high schools somewhere around 16 plus. So typically, our, our high schools are going to 16 plus, that's at permanent capacity. We also know that we have some portfolios out there at both Boffo High School and Woodinville High School. And both of them are within 10 years old, I think. Our oldest school right now is Inglemore High School. And they're probably our smallest footprint, is what we have.
Right. And then phase three will be done in four 2017, so there's that admin building, right? But stays might be available for that area.
Yeah, so phase three will be completed by 2016. And what we know is the admin 130 will be available for additional capacity. Yep, and I believe in the transition year, we'll be using Woodinville High School admin 130, transitioned classrooms. So what we need to do as classrooms.
So Woodinville's like 1800 and Boffo like 2200.
What is the street that divides from Long Beach and King County? Is it one?
Northeast line? Northeast 205th Street or 244th Street somewhere?
Okay, two of them.
Are you sure?
You guys must be a GPS like.
So one of the things that we wanted to do is try to give everyone some perspective about the estimated impact. And so there's going to be two things that we're going to be sharing with you. The first is going to be the grade reconfiguration impact. So just moving your sixth graders up, your ninth, and your ninth graders up. So we tried to do a quick bar chart. Roughly 9,785 elementary students in 2017, no change. All right, so they can all be nice and happy.
Still elementary.
Yep, still at elementary, no change. All right, so again, this is grade reconfiguration.
No change in.
This doesn't figure on that. This is just great.
This was a really intense conversation we had at EDTF to try to figure out, let's remember, we're looking at 2017, and if you look at it as, that's 2017, I think about elementary, sixth grade's already gone. It's 2017, right? The grade reconfiguration in 2017 is the middle school receiving the sixth grader.
Yep. So if you look at the K8 middle school, you can see roughly about 1800 sixth graders will be impacted with some grade reconfiguration. Right, your 3200 seventh and eighth graders, again, small change. And then look at high school, if you look at the ninth graders, right, the grade reconfiguration will be about 1600 students. Right, moving into high school of your 600, 100 total students.
That makes sense.
All right, now let's get into the boundary adjustments. All right. So now we want to lay out the boundary impacts for you. So again, of those 9,700 students, roughly 1100 students will be impacted due to some boundary change impact. The remaining 8,600 will be no change, sort of stay the same. And then if you look at your six eight middle school, roughly about 700 students will be impacted with your K6 boundary change impacts. And then about 4,300 would stay the same.
And those tie back to those movement charts that we showed where, where the kids are coming from and to.
Okay, so this is the one that we have to really wrestle with, is high school.
And we had to do two slides because when we tried to do one slide for this, it just about popped us up in the air.
Yes, yes. So we put it in color for you also. Okay, so remember, think of this as 2017, where kids are. School, first day of school. And does that make sense? All right, so for example, at Boffo High School, there's going to be about 1500 plus 9 through 12 that there won't be any changes for. Then there's going to be, Boffo will also receive roughly about 460 9 through 12 graders from Inglemore High School. Does that make sense? Same with Inglemore, roughly 1200 plus students, there'll be no change. But Inglemore will also receive about 40 students, 9 through 12, from Boffo High School. The new school, North Creek High School, all kinds of changes. We're just feeding that school to the impact. Yep, 911 only. And then no change at Woodinville. Does that, does that help sort of? Because there's going to be two separate things happening at the same time in 2017, which are boundary, your grade reconfiguration and your boundary adjustments.
So Woodinville no receipt.
No receipt.
Only, only the bar is sort of.
So it's looking like in addition to North Creek, with Boffo having a third of their students being new essentially, that we're really going to want to be thinking about how to assist them.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
So what I'm thinking about is, impact in the spring of 17 will be on the students that are leaving that school go elsewhere. The impact in the fall is going to be on the students coming into new school. And they're going to be different.
And I'm also thinking that that's why it's so critical to have the boundary finalized.
Yes.
And the spring of 2016, so schools have a full year to work with students and parents.
All right. Exactly, on both sides. Right, but I guess, you know, projecting to the high school world, you know, 37 kids coming in, North Creek is going to be, everybody's. You know, that things like leadership and all that stuff gets determined in the spring, not in the fall. So I think about how do we get those 460 kids.
That's part of the high school grade reconfiguration task force work? That all that.
The transition.
How do you get the leadership involved? How do you get the PTA included or?
And part of, well, and even part of the hiring of the planning principle for North Creek to get that stuff taken care of before they.
We're all, we're also, we're also currently working on the waiver policy as well because we know that there's, there's going to be probably likelihood of, of people wanting to access the waiver policy, perhaps seniors. But we need to build up to that over the next couple of years. And so we're going to be making some changes in our waiver policy for this year and for next year and the following year to give ourselves some capacity.
Procedure.
Our procedures, yeah, our, our procedure. But to give ourselves some capacity to hopefully accommodate as many students as possible, particularly the seniors who just may not want to leave at that point in their educational career.
It's like, well, possibly we're impacting those.
That'll be the biggest one for sure.
Remember, it's about 100 to 100 plus.
About 100, 100.
You know, we know from looking at the data that Boffo is a really strong academic school. I mean, we know that, that it's an option, that is a positive option. They have AP, they have a lot of other choices. But that's not what they are hearing in the community. And so we talked a little bit when I went out the, about the importance of the messages that the state schools.
Absolutely.
They're already working.
But I think there'll be an emotional.
That's what I shared.
I think it might be an emotional component of seniors wanting to.
Absolutely.
That's where, that's the priority that we're looking at and why we need to make sure there's space so that seniors, students who would be seniors who've done two years, who've completed two years. It's not, those are the students that we're going to have really, really worried about and want to make sure that we've got space and, and them as the priority.
I'm thinking more beyond the seniors, I'm talking about families that are moving from Inglemore to Boffo High School. That's just a huge shift and, and a way to facilitate that change and then help impact the culture of the new school that they're going to as well. So and just some of those, I think, will be some of the difficulties that we'll have.
So at the end of the day, I think, from the subcommittee perspective, I think this, this was our best thinking, given the themes, considerations we use. And trying to really look at how we can minimize the impact we have in North Creek and help some of the enrollment, the balancing enrollment in the Southeastern part of our district. So I think at the end of the day, it's probably around 3,000 kids that will probably be moving in these respective levels.
Big.
All right, so there's some key messages that we wanted to share with the board up here. That the draft recommendations are really coming from the EDTF. And what was great about the EDTF group, this was a unanimous sort of vote that we came on. So the subcommittee, we presented this to our larger team, everybody gave us a thumbs up, looked good. There's really no real big discussions. I think we vetted most of the concerns that we had out at the, the larger group. We still have a little concerns about the north end growth and the east, the Southeastern part of our district. But I think overall, this was a good first step for us as we take a look at this. The second key message that we have is that 2017 is really only a milestone for the EDTF committee. It's not an end all beyond planet. Even though we still will have to look at and consider our growth in the north end, our deep finding enrollments in the eastern part. And we'll have to really continue to keep our pulse on the housing developments and the Irving Brook line and all of the changes that continue to happen in the district. So this is for us, this is not the end all beyond, this is just a milestone, okay? The, we talked about there's two separate balancing issues that we have to continue to focus on in our committee. The overcrowding is in sort of our north central part of our district. And then the law enrollment is sort of our Southeastern part of our district. And then the last thing that we wanted to say is, you know, the size of the change area does not equate to the magnitude in sense, right? So it may look like Alaska and still only have two people. So our recommendations that we wanted to make to the board are three recommendations. So the first thing that we wanted to recommend is the proposed strategy changes to this service area at the United for September 2017, right? And part of that will be considered the construction of a new facility on the Moppy Site, which is then included in the 2018 bond to continue to address the north end growth with permanent facilities.
What, what we would like to be able to do, if, if the board were to endorse that particular recommendation, is similar to what we did with North Creek, to actually keep in the planning process for that new school in advance of the 2018 bond so that we were at a point to begin construction as quickly as possible after 2018. Because, you know, you still look at some of those numbers in the Fernwoods, the Canyon Creeks, the Coquines in that part of the district, and, you know, those are still larger than what we would like to see. And can I ask the subcommittee, did you sort of do a preliminary run at what a service area for a school up there would look like?
Is that elementary or junior high?
Well.
That's the question. That is so way over. That's the question, if you do a K8 or just a K through five. And when we drafted our boundaries, we tried to limit the impact such that if, say, if a new school is approved with the bond, that it'll be a smaller subsection that will be impacted and the surrounding schools won't. So it'll be, you know.
So they looked at future planning or future boundary changes and looked at more of the Coquine, Canyon Creek.
It would pretty much be those three schools that would be that one line.
Thanks for the.
So there's a third recommendation that we want to continue to further analyze the Southeastern part of our district. I think we need to continue to keep our pulse on that side of the district as we factor in 1351, the McLeary, UGA, New Halls, New Grove, all of those type of things. What do we do in that Eastern part of our district? I think that's the thing that we want to continue to assess from the committee.
So for instance, if you say repurpose, one might be a primary center essentially. And no one's put this forward, but you're looking for different uses for that.
Yeah, it could be any number of things. It could be something like that, it could be a specialty school, it could be leased to a private school provider, charter provider, something along, I mean, you can do a number of things.
Can we share something with the community around that word?
Yeah, I think. You guys want to share with the committee? Kara? Kara, she's our east side.
Well, and I guess I was pushing on this a lot more than anyone else was, specifically looking at kind of the Bear Creek, Cottage Lake, Eastridge and Sunrise. I mean, they're all really small, and Mountain Hill. I mean, the numbers are low and they're going to get lower when the sixth grade's pulled out. And those of us that go to smaller schools realize there are some downsides to a smaller school as far as programs and opportunities, which is kind of funny, it's kind of what the larger schools have as well. It's just on the other end of the spectrum. And I, I mean, I believe as a parent who's had a kid go through these smaller schools, the elementary schools do need to be a certain size. And, and with 300 and, and now Sunrise dropping down below 300, I mean, maybe we can attest to that too. It's really difficult to give these kids the educational opportunity that I think we want kids in North Creek to have. And that's where the consolidation, I think, is something that should be considered.
Yeah, you know, and I was at the last EDTF where those numbers were discussed. And you certainly don't want to be in a situation where Seattle fell into where they gave up buildings too quickly and then found out.
Exactly.
And not even 24 months later, they needed them done. But at the same time, yeah, it's.
They have to buy them back.
Right, I know, you don't want to be in that situation. Yeah, but you, you can't ignore the fact that, it, it, being in a smaller school, unfortunately, it does negatively.
The factors that we called out in Resolution 680, I'm sure, I think that was 680. Say one you got up there.
Well, I think this is really a very consistent recommendation. I think it's a more reminder.
Yeah.
Yeah. You mentioned on the table.
Right, and there's so many things in flex right now with government. Exactly, that's what I mean. It doesn't really make sense to kind of just, you know, have a knee jerk reaction and decide, okay, we're going to, you know, consolidate when it may completely change in, in a very short period of time.
But to keep that.
So hard to.
To keep that option, right. Well, and I, I mean, personally, I felt like we need to be transparent and that if it is an option, that the community needs to be aware. And it's, you know, then they can also have a voice. I mean, that's the beauty of this two year process is that we can get feedback and make sure everyone is aware of, you know, what the challenges are that we're facing on the east side.
One of the biggest problems we had trying to balance all that, and you probably already know this, but when we thought about how do we move more kids out into the east side, the big limitations, along with the transportation issues, how do you get 75 more buses a day down Woodinville Dubal Road? You just don't, I mean, you just don't unless you go more roads. And so those schools are going to be smaller because there's no way to move kids out there short of zombie apocalypse, hour and 20 minute bus rides. Kindergarten is on the bus for an hour, nobody wants that.
I think expanding Woodinville Dubal, it's a construction.
Make it a turn lane in the middle.
But now with 75 more buses a day, there's just no way to do it. And it's the only road, I mean, there's no other way out.
Right. And we had a lot of discussion about whether to even include number three since it wasn't, you know, it's not saying, it's not a specific action. But to Kara's point, I, we, I thought it would be remiss of us not to include something and say, hey, we, we know that those numbers are too small, like, and we get that. We don't, we can't suggest what all these other factors are going to mean to it. But we, this is almost like recognizing that, like saying, we hear you and we're going to consider. And, and, you know, like, it's perfect. We didn't forget you. I think that speaks why, though it's important that we do have community members on these committees because you're seeing the direct impact in your communities of, you know, not enough classrooms. You're seeing the direct impact of too many kids, not enough kids. And so it was important and it helps us to take that message back to the community. For people who are on the front lines of it in all of our test versus.
I think you just have to keep in mind the, the communication challenge around two and three together. If on the one hand, you're going out to community and saying, we need to build, we need, we want to ask you to support construction of the new school in this part of the district while we're closing the school in this part of the district. Or repurposing a school somehow, consolidating somehow in the district. That's, there, I mean, that could be a perfectly legitimate need, but it's, could be a very challenging message to send.
That's a good point.
And it took us 24 hours to get there in the, in the subcommittee. And you got five seconds to explain to them why the two make sense. And you got five seconds to explain to them why the two makes sense anyway, it just doesn't work.
And then the EDF itself, the big.
What will be interesting, I think, in less looking at it, is what is the turnover rate for established neighborhoods? Like looking at Arrowhead, which now has.
It's surging.
If you look out on the east side, I mean, a lot of these neighborhoods, and I know my own neighbors. Yeah, it's starting. I know on Hollywood Hill, we've had a lot of turnover and a lot of young families moving in. And I think it will spread out, all the way out to Timbercrest, but it's a matter of what is that rate?
And do you get, I mean, right, and then you return that even as a turnover, how many kids really come in?
Right.
Because properties are still big out there, it's not density.
Right.
But I think just the way that you worded it too gives us an opportunity to look at it maybe a different way and not, not just closing that, but repurposing it so that meets the needs for the parents and still maybe gives us an opportunity that we don't know that exists.
Well, and I would also say that one of your strongest statements there is upcoming legislation. If we get hit with the smaller class size or the, all of that, we're going to need them regardless of how far the bus ride is. So that, there seems to be enough moving parts that that helps us explain why that's up there. And it should be, in my opinion.
So three recommendations that will come up this. So I just want to, go ahead, I'll bring up.
So really the last slide was just sharing some, so that Larry said there's a tight timeline for us. So we're meeting with the larger EDF group on this Thursday, the 29th, to share our conversation with the board. The 31st is when we plan to launch the evening posting online. So our staff is going through and verifying everything right now, making sure, yeah, you actually live here, you're going to the right schools. We have our open houses, as you can see, in February and the first part of March. We hope to come back with a recommendation to the board by 10th, just sort of finalizing our draft recommendation because we still have one full year to work on our final, do the sort of monitor and tweaking of our final.
So this is kind of where my last question, for the subcommittee members. I know one of our purposes of the open houses is not only to educate people, but also allow their opportunity for input. It's always possible something got missed in the process, but I also want to temper expectations for what are the, what is the reality of movability within the current plan? And we've studied it a long period of time.
You mean, can it be moved or the little shifts or?
So assuming that, you know, you've got 3,000 or some people who might see themselves going to some different school, who may wish there was a different plan that didn't have them having that level of change. You know, and we're going to say, go through this process, provide your input, it will be considered. But in reality, I want to be able to, you know, in fairness, we all need to be able to say, but there aren't that many moving parts or there are that many moving parts. I mean, you've studied this a long period of time. You know, in my mind, I'm thinking there could perhaps be some, some peripheral moves that might be possible if there were some logical things that were missed, but wholesale, you know.
I don't think wholesale, I mean, we've looked at so many options. And I don't think so, but we'll work with transportation, obviously. I know Susan's already caught little things here and there, like, oh, you have a dead end or you can't go from there to there. And so we've made those tweaks. But I would say.
Little stuff, you can move small groups of people, that kind of impact, you know, these kids have been together for a long time and they move them. We saw some almost ridiculous boundaries, you know, where there's five cul-de-sacs and the end of every cul-de-sac goes to a different school district. You know, but they got to go this way and get over to that. Those little kinds of changes are always going to be there. But on wholesale, can we really start redrawing pockets? I mean, but you have to have the 109 pockets.
Well, I just, yeah, I just think that all of us are going to have the opportunity over the next month to have many of these conversations with people. And in fairness to them, we need to be receptive to whatever their input or feedback is that might have value and merit. But we also need to be realistic with them about, you know, where the movable pieces may be on the edges of this particular plan.
And yeah, it's important to communicate to the community what's realistic. And what I hear that is realistic is we want feedback, but at the same time, there's not going to be major changes to this.
People shouldn't expect that there's going to be, you know.
So no, so I have a question and just a follow up comment. Maybe, you know, framing it, I think the great way to do is how you guys started out with the assumptions that the plan was worked under based on the community survey. So, you know, if you were to say, okay, well, we've decided we can bus walkers, then yeah, you can do a whole big change. But based on these assumptions that were worked on, this is, you know, where it came out. And so I think that will help people understand where the framework came from. And I was just wondering, you guys have an idea of how you're going to run the open houses?
Yes.
Yeah, confused.
That's a good. Very exciting.
That's next session?
And I will say that what I said to the elementary presidents was just that that we're not so much hearing, listening for the stories that people have because that would mean 20,000 stories. But we're listening to hear if there's anything that was missed in the process, anything that we should have thought about, that we didn't think about. And that's sort of the expectation that.
I don't think anybody on the subcommittee is going to say, we thought of everything. I mean, last week, Susan and Doug were making little tweaks to the little pockets because things didn't make sense over there. And we had to have missed some of this, there has to be stuff where there's going to be some shit.
Right, well, we have to some idea or it's, yeah.
Yeah, I just, the smaller stuff, the bigger stuff, at that point, you go back to what you said, which is, okay, so what's not important? That Canyon Park is no longer in its district. You know, I mean.
Or the kids can be an hour and a half on a bus.
What do you want to throw out is kind of the question? Or which of these things are least important to the community? I think that's where your moving comes from.
Yeah, and the consideration parameters and themes that we use, I think that was the basis for everything that we put together. And we tried to.
That was obvious.
Yeah, and we definitely, I think with every one of the options that I think they went through, they tried to do that and realized, you know, moving everybody east will be moving all your walkers and moving his pass to schools, which goes against some of the themes and considerations.
And those things and considerations, which the EDF spent quite a bit of time developing and arguing about and, you know, a couple of months talking about those, all those considerations to take into account. And they're not prioritized.
So the whole concept of fair, so equal, we couldn't apply all of those themes and considerations equally at each one of the schools because each school had something different. We used the example of Bear Creek having no walkers. There are all runners. Where Fernwood, you think majority of them will be walkers.
I think also when you talk about helping everybody understand the depth of the process, you think, sure, a few little things could have been missed or a street changed or something like that. But when you think, these guys are spent.
40 plus hours.
Well, and, you know, here ahead of that and all of the time really digging into this, that it's unlikely that any big idea wasn't unearthed. I mean, somehow that would have come out in the process and I think that helps people.
That would be a huge relief if we found there was a there was something that we totally missed that would make things work better. That would be great. I love that. But I just think it's important that, you know, we not oversell which, what may be possible as a revision to the plan.
And as a parent who's, you know, the high school being built in my backyard and as I, as I went to those community meetings, I knew I wasn't going to change where the high school was going to go. I knew that we were going to have, you know, there were going to be certain issues that go along with having a high school in the backyard. But it was, it was the process of being heard. It was the process of just having that ability to say something and to share my concerns and also partly, you know, some of the excitement that goes along with having a new school and having the kids have the opportunity to do it. But I kind of look at that open houses, maybe our role is to be a facilitator to listening to those things, but being, you know, completely honest that there aren't going to be any like changes to the plan, most likely, unless this other thing that's going to be broken.
Well, 1351 is totally funded and, you know.
And they give us money for building.
If we build eight or 10 more elementary schools, the boundaries will change.
I think Kara, you will have a particularly strong voice in this school thing, having been on.
Yeah, I've been through this, so.
You really have lived this in many ways.
The other thing that's good to remember, I think, is that you've been immersed in it for a very long time, so it's really current. This is the first time I'm hearing it. I'm going to go way back to the beginning and ask questions that you think, oh, good heavens, we were worried about that six months ago. But because you're in it so deep, it's a totally different perspective if that's the first time I've looked at it. We've got to give them grace for that, right?
That's where I love that it's two years. I mean, I just, I just think you're giving the community a lot of time to prepare. You're going to give schools time to get ready, you're going to give PTAs time to figure out how to welcome new people and say goodbye. I mean, it just, I think it will help the process a lot to give people the time. To, like you're saying, to vent, you know, and then kind of come to acceptance and then hopefully be okay. I mean, we went through this with Timbercrest when we got switched. And the community was incredibly upset. And now everyone's thrilled, I mean, I am so happy at Timbercrest. So it's, I mean, I think our schools are good, I don't think there's a bad option here. So hopefully that will help this discussion and help people feel comfortable with the change.
And the message that we're North Shore, we are, it's the North Shore voters that approve bonds and levies, it's the North Shore voters that are supporting our schools. It's not just Timor or just Boffel or just putting them in.
Yeah, they are.
They really are performing schools in every single area of the country.
And that's where it'd be great if there could be open houses of the new, you know, I just went through, you know, when Doug and I went and that with all the other schools who've gone through this. I mean, I think there are so many tools that we have to help with this process and to make the community feel comfortable about where they're going and excited. So, I mean, I think that's a gift that we've given ourselves.
Sandy's brought this up before, but I think we'll have to work a little harder to make people excited about a change that doesn't involve a new high school.
We're also kind of versed in the other side too, which is that on the 12th, we're going to hear a lot of people saying, what do you mean, my kid's not on the big blue train anymore? We're going to hear, we're going to hear that side of it as well.
When she said, it's not interesting, I mean, it's easy to determine from the age where they've been going to for 10 years.
I went there, my kid went there.
Well, that's come up at our meetings when we've gone out to talk to parent groups. I'm fourth generation Boffel High School. And I want my kid to be dipped, right? I mean, there's all of those perspectives going, so.
I bought my house.
Just so.
Well, and that's where the waiver process and people.
They help folks to say, okay, and I'm hoping with what, I mean, with the capacity we've left, that that is really a viable option if your family feels that strongly.
But again, I'm not promising that.
I'm not promising anything, but I appreciate that you've thought of that and you've built that.
So from the board perspective, did we miss anything that we could, you know, that you guys needed? I think there was a couple of questions that wound up on the seniors removing and was there anything really from a, that we missed that we should add to our presentation or add to anywhere else that we could capture?
It is very. We covered, and again, we've been a part of this, so if I was coming in new on that question. But from the standpoint of having a background, we did a very, basically, good job.
Like I said, for people on the committee and the subcommittee, I think we had the right team.
No, absolutely.
We spent a lot of time and we're going to thank, we're going to probably pay for the tennis bill. We fed a lot of sugar and got them.
Grinding tea. I figured it was pitch.
I think it's good to have all of us that have kids in the school district, all of us on the board, you're at the committee, we're all going to be affected by this change. So we all are a part of it. And I think that's a good message out there too. And I'm going to talk to people, you know, I'll be part of this process with them. And my daughter will be first into the sixth grade, and that's an anxious moment being the first year of middle school.
So, and I had asked earlier that part of the presentations that, you know, when you go out to the buildings, include a little picture of the process so that people have an idea of what we're working on.
You know, and, you know, maybe just something to add is literally add up the hours, you know, in terms of like 40 hours for the subcommittee, just so people, that'll help them scope out how much thought do go in.
I've had people to the community though, nearly everyone I've done, somebody has said, man, I'm not going to answer this. Well, because if you start looking at, wow, this is a lot of moving parts, right? I mean, it's pretty overwhelming in terms of how much you get your arms around.
I'd rather be doing Enron's.
For the sake of drawing it out there, Susan added incredibly valuable information from transportation. Stuff we missed every step of the way, like the 75 buses down Wingo Duvall. And just for the sake of drawing it out there, Doug, I think this is version 3,208. And every one of these little pockets and every little move changed around 10 times. And Doug didn't kill any of us. And that was really hard for him to knock. Stuck with us the whole way and talked slow when we need it.
I really want, I think, I really do want to acknowledge Doug, his last week or so, this presentation has been coming together, he's got the unenviable task of having multiple editors looking over his shoulder, so.
Up to this morning.
Up to this morning, in all seriousness. Pulling in my office, Kara's on the phone, okay, page 37, they need to make this, change this. Okay, got it, that's a good edit, thank you.
Thank you.
36.
Very good job, you guys.
And thanks to the committee members.